We're doing.
You just can't talk to them. Can't talk.
I don't know, because it's all mobiles except for this one for the last.
And then we got another one there. We talked about that.
What is this?
I went and talked to him. Because if he short spaces, he could reach that.
Yeah.
Where is Robert? Where are Robert?
Well, they're probably taking a long time getting Cooper in.
Yeah. Do that first.
Should go pretty far.
Well, yeah, I think. Well.
Oh, shoot.
It's Stewart.
They got tardy boxes on your report card. I mean, absentees.
I have no choice.
Excuse.
Period. I have no choice of the issues. Just doing that.
Welcome to the regular scheduled public hearing of the Metropolitan Shreveport Zoning Board of Appeals. For public hearing agenda items, if you wish to make public comments on an application, we have comment slips at the speaker's stand next to the podium. For future notification purposes, it is very important that you fill out a slip and drop it in the box when you come forward to speak. Please state your full name, mailing address, and zip code before addressing the board. We will call each case on the agenda in order and hear first from the applicant, then those speaking in favor. Ten minutes are allotted for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. We will then hear from those wishing to speak against an application. Again, ten minutes are allotted for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. One representative of the application may then speak in rebuttal if desired. After hearing comments on each case, the board will then immediately deliberate and vote on that case before moving on to the next case on our agenda. Please note that when the board is deliberating, members of the public are not permitted to comment. Any member of the public may request a copy of the board's decisions on a particular case by contacting our office at (318) 673-6480 after 1:00 p.m. tomorrow or by accessing our website at shreveportcatoMPC.com. All of the ZBA decisions are subject to appeal to either the city council or the parish commission depending on the location of the property in question. Please note that it is your responsibility to contact the appropriate governing body about their procedures as related to the matter you are concerned with. Copies of this document and phone numbers to contact the governing bodies are available on the table next to the podium and in the entryway to this room. As a courtesy, please remember to turn off cell phones while the ZBA is in session. The zoning board of appeals values your testimony and appreciates your compliance with these guidelines. What do we hear for the minutes of September 14th, 2016? Motion by Mr. Holland, second by Mr. Cooper to approve. Please vote. Mr. Stewart, yours hasn't recorded. I mean, Mr. Stewart, yours hadn't recorded. There you go. Motion carries unanimously. Case BAC 26-16, 748, Lassus.
My name's Roland Toops, 1318 Forest Creek Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71115. I'm here today just to ask for the catering permit for Bistro to Go for the thrifty liquor, the thrifty liquid and food catering business. This permit will not change the Bistro to Go lunch service at all. The restaurant is open from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in the afternoon. From 2:30 on to 5:00 is whenever they are preparing food for catering events that they have scheduled. And they also do some food to go at that time. And that's the reason it was mainly named Bistro to Go, because a lot of the food that they serve is to go, okay? In the evenings, like I say, they're sometimes during that time between 2:30 and 5:00, they're preparing food for the caterers, for the functions they have that particular night. I've also supplied you with pictures of the parking lot across the street. There's a couple of days that it was full, but they were shooting a movie on those days in that area, and that was the reason for that. And I also showed you pictures of the restaurant, the way the tables and everything are set up.
So tell us, what are the, these are the difference in these two photos or three photos?
The, that's just different shots of the inside of the restaurant, of how the tables are. And then the other shots are from the parking lot on the restaurant side and also across the street. The man was complaining that we were using his parking lot and we don't need his parking lot. But if we have customers that pull over, he just needs to tell them to leave.
We didn't get the parking lot.
Didn't I get the parking lot ones?
We'll share. We got one. We got one, we'll share.
So we've also got in our, in our packet, a floor plan. Is this the current floor plan or is this proposed floor plan?
Sir, to be honest with you, I did that floor plan because I got a call at the sort of last minute, and I wasn't at the restaurant when I did it, and I did it from memory.
Okay.
The pictures are the true thing.
Okay.
I hate to tell you that, but that's the truth.
Okay. So the parking lot photos are to show, I guess, a time lapse, time, uh, by different times, different days at lunch. The assertion being that parking's not an issue because of the.
We're not changing anything in the restaurant. The restaurant will stay the same. They probably will never serve any alcoholic beverage whatsoever. The beverages will just be used for the catering functions only.
And can I make something real clear? Please remember, your alcohol request was approved at our last meeting.
Yes.
This is strictly the parking issue.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So you don't have to worry about that.
So you've got alcohol now.
Yes, what I'm saying is it's not going to change anything, and the restaurant is operating, has been operating since 2005. And as far as I know, there's been no complaints, verbal complaints to anyone.
All right, any questions for Mr. Toops?
Did, did y'all work something out with, and I forget the gentleman's name over at Kiantes, was there any formal agreement made about?
Sir, I made this offer to him. After the meeting was over, one of you, I don't remember exactly which person suggested, there's a lot of wasted space over there, and there is. I agreed or suggested to him that I would pay half of rescheduling his parking lot and painting it. Has nothing to do with me, I offered to pay half of it, and I got no response.
So just to be clear, we are looking at a variance of 11 additional spaces, is that correct?
That is correct.
Additional to.
The variance that was given back a few years ago.
Which is?
I thought somewhere it said five, I might be wrong.
Right, so there's a 16-space variance. All right. So the floor plan shows 18, 18 seats.
Whatever, I don't remember the exact count, truthfully. I sure enough showed you the pictures, so.
Well, this, this case has interested me greatly, and so on Monday, the 19th, I went out and did a car count. At 11:24, there were eight cars in your lot, 22 people seated in the restaurant. Over the course of the next hour and a half, 10 cars came into your lot, so some left and some came.
They, they usually move pretty quickly.
Right. Thirty-seven cars parked across the street behind Kiani. On that day, there were 64 available seats in the restaurant. So before opening, you were already at a third capacity on your seating, and if you extrapolate the percentage of numbers out, there were already a dozen or so cars already parked off-site. So there's a huge parking problem at that location. And it's incumbent on you to fix it and not anyone else.
I have gone to the location right next to us and tried to work out something with them. It's an architect that's redoing that building and could not. I've gone across the street to the church and tried to work out something with them and could not. I've tried to work out something with the gentleman that, um, that has the restaurant across the street. He has not responded, cannot work it out. I hate to, I don't like to talk about people, but we're a competitor to him. And, and the prices at Bistro to Go for lunch is $45 a unit, less than what he sells or even more in some cases. And it's, it's just competition. I mean, we've got competition all over the world.
So, I guess, Mr. Sweeney, do we, are we assuming that the site plan submitted is what we, we hold them to?
Are you talking about the floor plan?
Yes.
Well, if you'll notice in our recommendation to you that we thought stipulating that it be no more than 18 customers at a time being in the restaurant, based on what we thought was the seating capacity based on that floor plan, was one of the things we felt was a way to ensure not excessive overcrowding of the site and therefore not requiring as much parking in their peak operations. But that was what we, we used as the basis to our stipulation.
Okay. Any questions from the board for Mr. Toops?
My concern is he's saying, Mr. Toops is indicating that that was just an old floor plan or one from his memory, that he didn't actually go and count the number of tables or seating capacity. Am I not correct?
Yes.
It was just something to show where the tables.
That I had to do it to spur the moment.
What we're saying from staff or whatever, they're not ice cream and ice cream.
Right. I mean, there are 27 seats in this photograph.
Right.
And that's not, and that's not all of them. That's a third of them, a little more than, a little less than a third of them.
Those are different views of the same tables to, we try to give it to you from different angles, so it would be clear.
Again, there were two two-tops, 12 four-tops, and two six-tops on the day I went. Sixty-four seats. That, that's just a, great that they have a successful business.
I will say this too, we're not, you know, always 100% every minute of the day, you know. Just because you have them, you don't necessarily use them. It would be nice, but we don't.
True, true, but let's take, take the seats out and look at the car count. I mean, there were 40 cars almost that didn't use the lot that they're supposed to use. In other words, the, the business, in my opinion, is benefiting from the work and upkeep and maintenance and expense of the property next door. And to me, you speak of competition, that's an unfair advantage. Because y'all, they're not being held to this, they're not being required to provide parking that other businesses in town do.
We have, we have, we have made a generous offer.
And that's, that's unfortunate that he doesn't want to entertain it, but that's his prerogative. It's not his problem to solve the parking for Bistro to Go. And so that's the quandary that I'm in, is yes, it's a successful business, it's a popular business, and I'm not in any way suggesting that I'd like, like to see it closed. But I don't think it's fair as a statement or as, for us to endorse one business owner over another just because he's landlocked.
Well, I think if you look at the staff's recommendation based on all the circumstances, that to me creates a good, a good opportunity to protect next door to a large degree and still provide Mr. Toops' business, you know, with the opportunity to keep functioning, you know, at, at a level that will sustain some profitability coming there to support the to-go business.
I think we should.
And I mean, I've seen it many a time, went through there myself and at lunch, and it was, there's plenty of parking there. But what comes and goes, you know, in his spot, if you locate like the staff recommended with the table spot, that ought to control it to a large degree. There's a lot of situations like this throughout the city. Not only you're looking at Lavender Two, not impeaching on its evening restaurant business, which has, you know, probably the largest concentration of customers coming in and out.
True.
For Enrico.
Well, but that's all well and good, and there may, he may be having empty parking lot, but it's not a public parking lot. It's not for another business to use.
Well, yeah, and I think we talked last time about it. If he wanted to put the signs up and enforce it, you know, that's his right.
That's absolutely true. He could, he could put a barricade up, he can hire, he can start charging, charging by the slot if he wants.
Based on the staff's recommendation, I think that's about as fair an option for both parties as it really is.
All right, any more questions for Mr. Toops? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak for this case, case BAC 26-16? Is there someone here with Bistro to Go? I mean, with, a bit of, one of the owners of the business, not, not just the building?
He's also owner of the business. Ron Michota, 628 Stoner, Shreveport, on behalf of the business. I appreciate y'all leaving this open for us to come back and present this additional evidence. We've given you those photographs. Those, Mr. Berry, are a sampling of certain days. In fact, last Thursday, I personally went out there and took the last set of photographs where Mr. Enrico's parking lot was almost empty, and there were two open spaces in front of Bistro to Go. We don't mind any stipulations as far as the amount of people that can be seated at a particular time.
That was my concern. I don't want to handcuff a business owner to a number that they may not have been aware of. I didn't realize that Mr. Toops was the business owner as well, or ran the, ran the Bistro to Go.
Right.
As I just wanted to give the opportunity, if anyone was here, to address that number in case it was not a just pre-discussed number.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Michota while he's here?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak for case BAC 26-16? Anyone wish to speak against case BAC 26-16? What do we hear?
I make motion to approve based upon the staff's recommendation, the variance and then the limitation by the seating within the capacity.
What is the limitation of seating going to be?
Well, according to staff report, 18. Second by Mr. Cooper. Yeah, according to the staff report, 18, as referenced by the, by the floor plan in our packet. Discussion? First, Ron.
No, if it's the seating, I mean, that, that solves a lot of problems right there. If that's what we're going to do, I'm okay.
All right, please vote. Motion carries five to one. Case BAC 7, uh, BAC 76-16.
Good afternoon, I'm John Settle. My office address is 1915 Citizens Bank Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana. I represent the applicant Union Investments LLC. I believe the staff report is fairly comprehensive, and the staff has recommended approval of the application for a liquor store at this location. It's a brand-new construction facility, very well done, and I went and visited personally, and I think it would, the staff recommendation should be approved. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Settle?
I will state, and I probably should have, Union Investments also has at least two other stores, high-end convenience stores is what I call them, where they have more than, that are very well maintained, and then this is the first liquor store application. I don't, I believe that their record with the city has been fine as far as compliance with all liquor requirements and sales, et cetera.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak for case BAC 76-16? Anyone wish to speak against BAC 76-16? What do we hear?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Stewart, second by Mr. Holland. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Set six is case BAC 77-16, 1626 Easy Street.
I am Mary Ann Spiller. I live at 1633 Easy Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71101. And I am here about the zoning for a modular home to be put on my property at 1626 Easy Street. And the reason I want it over there is because I'm in a rent house right now, it's too small for me. And the modular home that I've looked at is nice, it's roomy, spacious, and it's my mom's property. It's in my name, but it's my mom's property, and I would like to have that home put over there. I was born and raised out there on Stoner here, and my kids were too, and I would like for my grandkids to be raised up out there in the areas, a nice area for kids and a good schooling and everything.
Ms. Spiller, this is the model you're going to get?
Yes.
Very nice looking. Any questions for Ms. Spiller? You understand that there is an administrative replat that has to be submitted prior to the approval of the, of a permit? Mr. Jean can explain that to you. He'll, he'll find you momentarily.
Okay.
It's just an administrative piece of paperwork that has to be filed for, for the property.
Oh.
Okay? Any questions for Ms. Spiller? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
I need your name and address.
Okay, I'm Edward Mooney from Premier Homes in 4000 East Texas Street, Bossier City. And Mrs. Spillers is wanting to purchase a home that we would have built on her property. It's a modular home, and I, I'm sure that most people on MPC know that the application doesn't specify a difference between modular and manufactured, even though there's a huge difference construction-wise. You know, the home is 100 mile an hour rated, just like if she was building a home on a slab. And the insulation, the wiring, the plumbing is, meets all of the codes that a site-built home or pier and beam home, which, when we get honest, that's what she's purchasing, is a pier and beam home to go in a neighborhood that has pier and beam homes. And of course, aesthetically, from the outside and the inside, if you walked in it, it's going to exceed and match any site-built home, especially the efficiency of the home. You know, it's going to have two-by-six exterior walls with R19 insulation. There's not a home in her neighborhood that has that. You know, the efficiency rating of her heating and cooling, you know, the way the kitchen is, and like I said, back to the wiring, it's not going to be wired like a mobile home. It's going to be wired like a regular house with thicker wire going to different components that draw more amperage. So there's a, a big difference between a manufactured and modular home for people who don't know that, and I just wanted to let everyone know that that's what she is looking at, not just a regular manufactured home to go there, but a modular.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your comments. Those of us who've been on the board a while have received an extensive education in the past couple of years about the difference, though. It's always nice to be reminded, though. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak for case BAC 77-16? Anyone wish to speak against BAC 77-16?
Just to bring to your attention, there was some additional information put in your packet of the neighborhood folks that are in opposition to this case, and you may want to look at that just as a point of reference.
Thank you. Wish they had been here, they could have heard information that Mr. Mooney just passed on to us.
Yeah. We have some support ones and some opposition.
And I will say, unfortunately, under our current ordinance that we have, that because it's a modular home and has to go out as notified as a mobile home.
Right.
Which, under the new code, the UDC, that won't be the case. And so typically modular homes are allowed in any single-family neighborhood because they look like site-built homes. And so unfortunately, that's, you're, Mr. Berry, your, your point is well-taken. There's a lot of confusion over the difference between the two.
Just, just to be clear, after the UDC, this would be by right?
Yes, the modular home would be by right, yes. The, the only thing that would prevent a modular home from going into a single-family neighborhood is that there's certain deed restrictions or covenants with the HOA that might prevent that from happening. And in that case, we don't enforce those, that's enforced by the local organization. So, but yeah. So, but yes, modular homes are a different animal, a different class from your so-called mobile homes.
And the HOA's recourse would be district court?
That is true.
Alright, any... Did I ask for opposition? I did. What do we hear?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Holland.
With STIP.
Second by Mr. Cooper to approve with STIPS, with the stipulation that an administrative replat be submitted and approved by the executive director prior to permits issued... Being issued. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Case BAC 78-16. 1638 Easy Street.
Good afternoon, I'm Monica Lockett, 1638 Easy Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71101.
Can you pull the microphone to you? I'm having a little trouble hearing you. Thank you. Did you get the address, Diane? Alright, Ms. Lockett, you're here for the same thing, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And Mr. Mooney, I guess you're here for the... You're gonna be supplying both.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Alright, any questions from Ms. Lockett? Alright, thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak for BAC 78-16?
Good afternoon.
Hello.
I'm Lula Lockett. I live 206 Lister Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71101. I'm Monica's mother, and I wanted to just speak on her behalf of the house. The houses that are across the streets from her are modular homes too, because I sat on her front porch and watched them bring those houses in on a truck. They did not build them from the ground up. They were brought in on a truck and stapled the front, the sides, and all was stapled together, they, you know. So, there is a difference. And so the people that are complaining about this, they are in modular homes also. They are not in homes that would be up from the ground up, because I've watched them do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lockett. Anyone else wish to speak for BAC 78-16?
Good afternoon, Shirley Wills, 1619 Easy Street. Just wanna let you know that I am very much in favor of those homes. I've known both ladies all of my life, and I've been living on Easy Street, or at least 50 years. So, I think that it would be very nice, and I appreciate that too, if you would allow them to do this. In fact, we had prayer before I left. So, we're praying that you guys will have the heart to give them the zoning that they need. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Wills. Anyone else wish to speak for BAC 78-16?
Good afternoon, I'm Rachel Jackson. I am also a resident of Stony Hill area. My address is 314 East Boulevard. I serve on several committees for Stony Hill, and I think that the modular home would be an incentive for the area, because it's very nice. And Monica's a hard-working young lady, and she deserves something nice. So, I so too would appreciate if you would go in favor with getting her that home.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wish to speak for BAC 78-16?
How y'all doing? My name is Kendrick Ferris. Do I need to state the address?
Yes.
Okay, 1638 Easy Street. I'm just here, I'm in favor for it as well. That's my mother, so you guys know why I'm here. I don't want any problems. But no, just like they stated, just to, you know, just to add my two cents, she works hard, grew up in the neighborhood, so I think it'd just be, you know, it'd be nice to have something for her, and, you know, we can all spend a lot of time together, and it'd be great for the neighborhood, just for people to see a good example, man, people working hard, and you can actually put something nice in the neighborhood, you don't have to leave outside of it. And we just wanna build it up, you know, just bring some life back to Stony Hill if possible.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate y'all so much.
Congratulations to you.
I appreciate y'all.
Anyone else wish to speak for BAC 78-16? Anyone wish to speak against BAC 78-16?
Now, also, I'd like to bring your attention, you were also provided in your packet some additional letters of both support and in opposition, or added to your packet for your consideration.
Alright, what do we hear?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Holland, second by Ms. Osborne. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Case BAC 79-16. 3913 Doris Avenue.
My name is Tom Foncuberta. I'm a surveyor with Moore and Associates, and I'm representing Ms. Loretta Bryant. She's the applicant petitioning for a mobile home, double-wide, and she hired us to do not only the site plan, but also the replat. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
This is a new unit?
Yes, sir.
Alright, any questions? On the board? Thank you, sir. Thank you, appreciate your time. Anyone else wish to speak for BAC 79-16? Anyone wish to speak against BAC 79-16? What do we hear?
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Bergeron, second by Mr. Holland. Please vote.
I'd just like to mention briefly for the next, and that, you know, the insert that y'all provided us with the different geographic reference. I mean, just like on this particular case, you can see in the box how many empty lots there are, you know, in some of these neighborhoods. Actually, bring a lot to...
Motion carries unanimously. Case BAP 31-16. 7910 Pathway Loop.
Chris Lacome, 506 Ranger Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana, 7111. I'm here on behalf of Mr. Elijah Umling. I'm a sales... I'm in sales at Clayton Homes in Bossier City, Louisiana. And from what I understand, he was in a residential agriculture zone, and there's other manufactured homes around in that area. Just the guy who separated his land into pieces actually didn't go through this process, from what I understand. Very new in this industry, so...
Alright, and this is a new unit as well, correct?
Yes, sir.
Any questions for Mr. Lacome? Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak for case BAP 31-16? Anyone wish to speak against BAP 31-16? What do we hear?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cooper, second by Mr. Stewart to approve. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Case BAP 32-16. 5356 Lake Island Lane.
Good afternoon, my name is Steve Powers, 575 Unadilla, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71106. This is an application for my mother to place a double-wide on the lot adjacent to her primary home for caregivers. My mother is now 84, and she has arranged for a RN to be able to live on the adjacent lot.
The photograph in the packet, is that... Is this a...
That was a picture of the double-wide before it was moved to the new property.
Okay.
That was a previous location over a few blocks away on...
But this is the unit?
That is the unit, yes, sir. And it is completely invisible from the street. All of the native shrubbery and trees were left intact, so it's not even visible.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Powers? So, this is on a separate lot, yes?
That is correct.
It's not secondary residential?
That's correct. My mom and I own this lot jointly.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak for case BAP 32-16? Anyone wish to speak against BAP 32-16? What do we hear?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Holland to approve. Second by Mr. Cooper. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Case BAP 33-16. 11438 Lake Road.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Ashley Salone, and I live at 8601 Millicent Way, apartment 192 in Shreveport, Louisiana. And the reason why we...
What's your zip code, please?
71115.
Thank you, ma'am.
And the reason why we wanna put this home here is because we're... My husband and I, Jeremy, were recently married, and it'll be our first home, and we would like to put it, you know, in that neighborhood. The land belongs to my grandparents, and they have allowed us to put the house there. There are other mobile homes around us, and we've known, I've known everyone on the... In the neighborhood since I was pretty much born. And so I really, really appreciate it if you'd allow us to put our house there.
Congratulations on your wedding. Any questions for Ms. Salone? Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak for BAP 33-16?
Jared Bassett, 119 Arbor Place, Bossier City, Louisiana, 7111. Just wanted to specify that it's a brand-new home. And it does meet the variances, and it's gonna have a hard-surface driveway.
Okay.
It meets all the specifications.
Alright.
It's a manufactured one.
Any questions for Mr. Bassett? Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak for BAP 33-16? Anyone wish to speak against BAP 33-16? What do we hear?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bergeron, second by Mr. Stewart. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Case BAP 34-16. 733 Jenkins Road. An empty house.
Move to defer to the next meeting.
Hold on. We know anything about... Has anyone stepped out, you seen? Are they in the lobby?
We can check and see, but I don't think so.
The one you went to ask the question about.
It was, I figured.
Well, this is the one that you went to ask the question about. Why is it not...
Orientated.
Why is it not...
Yeah. Because it appears the other houses in that area, as best I can tell, are orientated.
And it's not like they don't have space or room. But they're not here, so we don't know. I don't think so.
Well, can I get a second while we're waiting to find out? For defer and continue?
One for you.
Mr. Cooper seconds the motion to defer and continue. For 30 days.
And it would be the November 9th of the EBA.
Not here.
Okay, we may have a situation where the person that it was supposed to be here may have gone upstairs, because the security guy told her to go upstairs, and she was trying to do something related to a mobile home.
Okay.
So, she might be upstairs, if you could just wait just a few minutes.
Sure, we can hold the vote.
Well, that kinda ruined our records for getting out of here.
Damn. We're on a roll.
We were on a roll. If we can get the director to...
Actually, at this time, Mr. Sweeney, would you like to introduce our new staff member?
Yes, Holly Phillips is sitting there where Sandy used to be. She's our temporary employee, you know, temp-to-hire. Always a possibility, she might work her way right into a permanent position, we'll see. But she came on board back a little over... It'll be two weeks, I guess. Was it two weeks or one week as of Monday?
One week.
It's one week, okay. But, and then...
It felt like two weeks.
Huh? That was what you were trying to say. Me working on the UDC, it's... Everything is just a blur, so... And, of course, Lauren Witt is one of our planners, and she's helping out to make certain that Holly understands the voting system, and so far, everything's working really well. City Council yesterday had a real problem with their system. They were doing hand votes all day long yesterday, so... When the gremlins come in and possess the system, you can often have a lot of chaotic situations, so...
You have a report for us?
No, we were told that one of the security guards told a lady that was asking about mobile home and sent her up to the fourth floor. So, Stephen is gonna verify that that was not her.
It wasn't her.
Okay, so it's not.
Okay.
So, go ahead and make a decision. On the 9th of November, okay. Ronnie? Ebony worked on this case, can you kind of explain to them why this mobile home is not parallel to the street as opposed to being perpendicular? Because the way this is laid out, and she's got room to move it, we don't know... That was one of the things that Ronnie was concerned about, Ronnie Bergeron. It was, that's right, we found out. So, did y'all hear that, that she doesn't think she can even come back on the 9th of November?
So, she wants an up or down today?
She wants an up or down, yeah.
Do we have the option to say, leave it to your discretion, to talk to her again, to see if she will orientate it, and based on whatever y'all decide, we're good with?
As far as I'm aware, there was no... I'm not aware of any reason why it had to be this way, but I... But this is how she wanted it. Tom may know, because I know that he's spoken with her.
If we approve it with the stipulation that it be turned, what does her recourse? Come back?
Well, she could...
I mean, would you have to reapply?
I would think she would just simply comply. There's no reason... She's got space to it. Most of the time, when people do that, they don't have space.
Right.
She does, and I think if you add that stipulation, that is a legitimate stipulation, so...
Alright, so, would you like to withdraw your DNC?
I'll withdraw my defer to the next meeting and change it to approve with the stipulation that the home be orientated facing this street.
Alright, so the motion on the floor by Mr. Bergeron is to approve stipulation that the orientation of the home be turned 90 degrees from its current indication on the site plan. Second by Mr. Holland. Discussion? Please vote. Mr. Sweeney? I'm sorry, Mr. Cooper, we need your vote.
Oh.
I did not record.
Thank you.
Alright, motion carries unanimously.
Number 13 is an item that says, "Consider ZBA meeting..." Number 13 is an item that says, "Consider ZBA meeting date changed to the 3rd Wednesday of each month." We've spoken about this at our last meeting. The reason for that, and again, it's totally at your discretion, because it really has to be built around y'all's schedules. That's what's important here. But the reason for moving it from the 2nd to the 3rd Wednesday of the month would give us more time for doing the packets, because as it's set up right now, before I ever got here, there has... It was set up so that when the MPC board was having its meeting on that Wednesday, which is the first Wednesday, that was the actual date that we should be sending the packet out for the ZBA for the following Wednesday. So we believe it would be appropriate to change that, if y'all are in mind to do that. But it is contingent on whether or not your schedules allow that. We're already down one person and have a vacancy that has yet to be filled, and I don't want to create a situation where we don't have a quorum. So if you think the 3rd Wednesday is workable for you, then we would entertain that we would do that starting in January, which means that people who are coming in for applications in November would be made aware of the fact that their applications would go... Instead of going to the November... To the January 11th meeting, the date would be January the 18th. So the deadlines will stay the same, along with the MPC application, the same deadline, one deadline date per month. It's just an extra week is built in there. So, I mean, by leaving it that way, by changing it that way, I think will give us more flexibility in terms of the notification process, as well as in getting the packets out in a timely manner.
All right, do we have a motion regarding changing the monthly meeting to the 3rd Wednesday of the month? For discussion?
I'll bring...
Second.
Starting in January.
Starting in January.
Starting in January.
Motion by Mr. Bergeron, second by Mr. Holland to approve. Any discussion? What's that?
This item is set up for voting on the agenda.
So you'll just have to do a hand vote on this?
Discussion?
I mean, if everybody wants to say their piece, if they have problems...
Does anybody have a conflict? All right, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Do you try?
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, Mr. Sweeney, reports for us, please?
I just want to very briefly tell you that we had an extremely successful first public hearing on the Unified Development Code and the proposed zoning map on September the 29th. We had roughly 45 people here, great comments, good questions. I gave it my dog and pony show presentation, some of which you all have seen, most of it, if you went to the reception, you probably saw most of it, and I've added to it since then. The purpose of that meeting was simply to collect comments. Our goal is to take the comments and concerns expressed by the public at that meeting. We will have an official response to those concerns that we will publish and post on the UDC website by the end of this week. We have also, at the same time, we have changed the map so that people can look at their properties easier and know what the proposed zoning is. We wanted to make it user-friendly. We also made it so that you could read the descriptions of the different proposed districts in a more user-friendly manner, as well as the matrix that lays out what uses are allowed in each district. What was happening is that if you didn't set your printer correctly, you would end up printing out a version of that that was so small, you couldn't read it. But if you knew what you were... If you're computer savvy, you would kind of know to do that, but, you know, not everybody's computer savvy. So we thought, let's make it very easy for people to access, so we changed that, and that's one reason why we also changed the map. The map we had up there before did not have all the street names on it, so now we have all the street names everywhere on there, and if you zero in on it after doing a PDF of it, you can actually see that each parcel of property has the proposed zoning on it now, so that you don't even have to look at the legend. You can go, oh, that's what it is. So we made all those changes this week, and so trying to make it so that people will understand what it is that they're looking at. The goal of the meeting on the 18th of October will be, we will officially respond to some of those concerns that were expressed. Again, I want to post most of those ahead of time, but I will, in my presentation, talk about those key issues. I may not talk about everything that was brought up, because some things were resolvable by simply making a simple phone call, like somebody misunderstood something, or they didn't understand what section they were looking at. So I'm not going to take up all the time with everything that everybody said, but the main, important ones. What will also happen is, since we did the draft, we've... Staff has even found mistakes and errors and changes that need to be made. So the staff is going to recommend a series of amendments to the UDC document, and possibly even to the map. And so we will submit that to the MPC board that night, telling them what it is we're requesting or recommending. The board will evaluate and vote on those amendments, and will vote on the document and the map, and at that meeting, they will take the official vote and forward the document and the map with the amendments on to the city council and the parish commission for their consideration. So in the month of November, I will probably be taking my dog and pony show to both of those bodies to do some presentations, to answer some questions. How quickly they move on our request will be determined how long they want to take to review certain things. And they also have the right to add amendments and changes. But bear in mind, because it's a Unified Development Code, that if the parish makes a change, and the city council makes a change, and it's not the same change, we have to have a conference committee that will review those changes and come up with a compromise. That conference committee, which is already spelled out in the UDC, is the MPC Master Plan Subcommittee. And that committee is composed of two members of the city council, two members of the parish commission, and four members of the MPC. So they'll serve as the go-between between all the bodies to rectify any differences of opinion. So at the end of the day, we will all have one document that everyone agrees with, at least, most everyone agrees with.
A consensus agrees.
A consensus. But it's kind of like, think about it as a conference committee in Congress, between the Senate and the House. Senate passes one version, the House passes another. They have to rectify the differences in the bill. This is the same thing that we'll probably end up doing with the UDC. Our goal is that all of this be done and finally adopted, hopefully no later than in January. I'm hoping by the end of December, but it may be January. And if that's the case, then the UDC would not go into effect until April 1st or May 1st, depending how long it takes both bodies to make a final vote. So I'm inviting you to come to the meeting on the 18th, only because I think everyone, especially anyone that's been involved and understood the process we've gone through for four years, two years as a team effort. Me and my staff have worked on this. It was worked on two years before I got here. We're bringing it full forward, as I want to say, fully out there for the public, and we have gotten tremendous input for over, now going on, 17 months. And so I don't think anyone can say, well, I didn't have a chance, because we've done everything possible to get people to comment. It's amazing, though, that in the 11th hour of the 11th hour, so to speak, that we are still getting some people just now waking up. And that's not unusual, that's what happens. Oh, you're actually going to adopt this? I say, yes, that's what we're planning on doing. So it's always fun to have to kind of work those things out at the last minute, but that's what we're doing right now, is tweaking for last-minute adjustments to make this thing work. So total budget for this was $450,000. We're coming to the end of that budget, and just wanted to let you know that this is... The 18th of October is a historical opportunity for this community to go forward with something that will make a huge difference. And you guys, as the ZBA, are an important part of that process, and as is the MPC board, as is all of us who have vested so much time and energy into this, and none of this would happen without a team effort. I mean, it's... It would just be nowhere if it hadn't been for a lot of very dedicated people making the effort to make this thing work. So that's the end of my sermon, so I just want to invite you to be at the meeting on the 18th. That starts at 6:00 PM in this council chamber, that's a Tuesday, that's next Tuesday, and it'll start at 6:00 PM and end around 8:00 PM. So you know that's where we'll be, so.
So it starts at 6:00?
6:00 PM. We're doing that so that people that work during the day have an opportunity to come in the evening, have more opportunities to be present. People are showing good interest. This is a good sign, very good sign. And that's...
After-hour refreshments being...
I wish, I wish. I just can't... No, I can't keep people to RSVP on something like that.
You send a menu out so we can tell you what we want.
There you go.
All right, the last thing on the agenda today is for me to appoint a nominating committee for the 2017 slate of officers for the board, and unless you have a conflict this month, I'd like to nominate Ms. Osborne, Mr. Cooper, and Mr. Bergeron to report back in November with a slate to vote on in December, unless we can vote on it that day too as well.
You sure can. It depends on how you want me to word it. If you want me to do a report and a vote, we can do that.
Yeah, I think a vote will be fine.
Okay.
I think we've all been vetted.
There you go.
I have a feeling another way this vote's going to go.
I've got some recordings.
Oh, excellent. Hot mic?
Yeah, some hot mic recordings.
Any comments from the board today? All right, thank you all for your attendance. We're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you for lunch.
You're more than welcome.
Does the committee want to meet real quick before we leave? The nominating committee want to meet real quick?
It's fine with me.